Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and follow the meeting to order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibration. Councilman McDaniel would be pleased to lead us in our prayer and pledging.
Father in Proverbs, you challenge us to never leave behind the good things, the attributes like goodness, kindness, truth, and honesty. But to bind them around our necks and to write them on the tablets of our heart. And Heavenly Father, we pray that within those attributes, that will be our legacy on this city council. Truth, honesty, kindness. And we won't be guilty of that old adage I learned in English in Brownwood High School. The evil that men do lives after them. The good is often teared with their bones. And we pray that the goodness that we put forth on this council will be our legacy forever. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the minutes of July 15th, 2019 meeting, please. Would you like that type of review?
I think it'll recover 50th and Main, but on page, well, I think it's maybe three. I'm not so sure. In the discussion of the playhouse on Eighth Street, there are no reminders underneath that section. Yeah, I guess it is the last page of the minutes. Top of the last page. That's all else.
Anything else? All right, motion to accept the minutes with my petition.
Quick, move it.
Second.
Second.
I'll pay your say out. Right, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. For the open meeting act, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Anyone present wish to speak to the council that is not on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'd like to see if we can get some stop signs when I came, you know, in a while. What stop signs on Sergeant and Seventh Street? Is it called a flag there? Or speed limit sign or something?
Speed on.
Stop on.
Yes. We got it, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir?
Stop signs on 13th Avenue.
Actually, you're on the agenda.
I'm on the other.
Gotcha, bud. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, thank you. All right, city council may consider discussing authorized setting the date for the annual barbecue cook-off in the city park for next year. Now, believe Ms. Kathy is here for that?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to remind everyone about the back-to-school splash tomorrow at school, doing school supplies as the school supply donation is the entry fee that will be donated to the school. Our picnic at the park, the 10th one, will be on October 5th of this year. We've already got volleyball teams and washer teams committed to this. But the actual cook-off that we're here for, the weekend of June 26th, 27th, next year, '20, we'd like to have the park and the pool Friday night, Saturday, Saturday night, and the KFSC blockout beginning on Thursday. That's what we did this year, regardless of ours. And that Thursday would be June 1st, yeah. And also, as an addition to that, we discussed maybe building a stage down there in the area. It's not going to be anything elaborate, please, please. And it's even been mentioned perhaps to make it portable. Because in the back in the day, the school vans and different people have had different events down there, and if we have a stage, we might be able to bring more students to the park. I mean, we had two private trucks, trailers, but then you got to go along them and move them and move them out. But we don't have to have an extra on the stage. May first of next year come.
I got that down for one minute. All right, anyone else? That's it? All right, thank you, Mr. Pessy. So...
Yeah, yeah, the whole, the big ones included in the park. I mean, the whole.
Yeah, I mean, here.
Yeah.
All right, city council may consider discussing authorized action on a complaint from Eric Hernandez concerning the intersection located at 13th Street and Q Avenue.
So I guess we authorized that, all right?
I apologize. Are y'all okay with that date? The 26th is 27th.
Fox Street, though, 25th.
Right.
You meant 26th.
I had it down Thursday through Saturday.
I'm not motion to do that.
Second?
Second.
I'll pay your say out. I apologize, Mr. Pessy and everyone else. That's my fault.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll have a answer for you on the stage by May 1st.
I heard that's where we're going.
Yeah. All right. One more time, city council may consider discussing authorized action on a complaint from Eric Hernandez concerning the intersection located at 13th Street and Q Avenue. Is that what he was here for?
Yep. Come up and talk to us or you...
Did I say your name wrong, sir?
No, you said it right.
Okay.
No, I was just wondering because if, because I know for a fact that's probably illegal for them to have that fence there. I don't know if y'all can get them to move it back.
There's been some discussion on this. I know we moved the stop, the yield sign, but it was after your wife's accident. And just to give everybody a little background, Ms. Hernandez's wife, she got into an accident right there at that intersection.
And she's seven foot three.
Right, right. And anyway, after the accident, we ended up moving the yield sign in hopes that that would correct things. And it had been authorized by the city council prior to that. But there's still an obstruction there on the fence. If you can see the lower left-hand picture right here, you have some, this extends all the way out. Well, I say all the way out. I don't know how much length they've got there. Yeah, I don't know, maybe, what is that, Steve?
Probably six feet.
Since they moved it up to where it needed to be, you would still have to creep. And you're still halfway in the intersection, and somebody could still get some...
Right.
So I was thinking just like a four-way stop sign there, if y'all can't do nothing with that fence.
Well, I think we need to research the fence. We found ordinance where we need to address it with the homeowner where they can't create enough structure where you can see.
So we, on the force, and it's right across the street, why they'd be dressed the same time, because I thought that's the one we were talking about.
Actually, you can see.
The avenue goes all the way to the corner, too.
Yeah, you can see. You can see both ways.
But see right here, where, okay, you have your yield sign here, so you can pull up and you can see what's coming either way. The problem is, you don't see that yield sign here. You know, if you could see the yield sign, you might be able to, but what's going to end up happening? We need to talk to the homeowner and see if they can bring that back, a little ways to accommodate for the, for the line of sight.
They can always do a line or a chain link probably, but I know we want the issue department for still all the way to the road because our ordinance is still allowed for that.
No. Well, six feet off the road, which I'm assuming is okay in our normal typical ordinance. But because this, the corner is offset in the back, so you still not going to have line of sight where it's at.
I don't think it needs to be any further forward than the front corner of the house.
Okay.
Or line of sight. Just on this outside corner, on the other side of the house.
No, I understand what you're saying. We would have to look at the ordinance for that specifically, though, you know, the corner of the house. But if we can at least get, because honestly, at this point, even if there was a stop sign there, you know, you wouldn't be able to see.
You're still going to have to creep.
Right, exactly. So I think the key is what we're going to have to do is talk to the homeowner and see, you know, ask someone, you know, to move that back.
Or make it a, something transparent that you can see through.
All right, hold on. Are they in the setback or out of the setback?
Well, the existing fence has been there for a long time. And that's what they went by, was on the existing fence. But I think Stan has found a provision in the ordinance that says that it's supposed to be backed 20 feet from curb. And what we need to do is get asked to look at that and see if that's what we need to do. But also, a lot of times, even if that fence is moved back, there's cars that park in front of the house. And so, anyone pulling up there is going to have to be real careful because if there's two cars sitting in front of the house, you're still not going to be... I myself, I pulled out there myself nearly in front of cars coming, you know, and so you got to really be careful.
Did we get the curbs made over there so that they couldn't park there? Because that was part of the thing that we passed as well, moving the yield sign, getting the curb for parking there.
No, I forgot about that. Sorry. I'll need to look at paying the curb. Well, probably need to put a sign.
No parking between two signs or whatever? So paying that due to signs?
Yeah.
What is the regulation as to parking near intersection? 1015 foot. So there should be no parking anywhere?
Well, tell, even if they park 15 foot back behind them, they're still going to park there.
Yeah, even if they park back there, you know, they're still going to be...
Well, have a 15 foot, so you go back 15, now you have a second view and a third view when you're standing on both. Yes, sir?
I know, I know a few places in San Antonio, especially like alleys when they come across the street, will have a large industrial kind of dome mirror on a pole.
Correct, yes.
So maybe right up near that dome bridge somewhere right there, but a large industrial dome mirror. So at least be able to see what's moving.
You're able to see something coming at you, you know? Yes, sir?
Like you said, the four-way stop sign can be the best way to do that. Could there be a stop? Could I, I've hit that bridge. You can get hit. Like you said, his wife should got hit.
My daughter and daddy got hit. Ten inches from getting hit.
She's about to get him to see him.
Yeah, but they said they're coming, they can see the, they have to stop at a four-way stop sign.
Yeah, if they see it.
Because you have to see a four-way stop.
But if it's a four-way, yeah, they have to stop.
Yeah, they got to stop because they passed it.
Then they're going to scoop way out to be able to see somebody there.
So if they stop, then you know what's going to, you're going to have to stop. And if they pass it, then it is obvious because they passed it.
Thank you, sir. Basically, let's do the signs, get it back at least, you know, the 20 or 30 feet back. Do the signs, do the paint, and not have a problem looking into the dome. Yeah, we'll have to do that as well as far as the ordinance is concerned. With chief and all. All right, motion to pay the curb, do the signs, possibly the dome, and took with the landowner as far as the front corner fence as far as the setback. No motion?
Can we make a motion not possibly?
Do I hear?
Can we make a motion not possibly, or does it have to be something?
Sure, why or where?
Well, it's what we talked about, what we agreed to do in a couple of those...
Looking in?
Looking out.
Motion to advocate what needs to be done on that corner.
Second?
I do.
I'll pay your say out. All right, thank you. All right, city council may consider discussing authorized action concerning a complaint about the police department program with Mike Potts. Is Mike Potts in tonight?
Mike Potts is not in tonight. Then two of them are...
Two in the room.
That's correct.
So we drop his request for future. I think it's out of any fit for session.
Well, actually, we need to go into that, so I'll explain what happened.
Oh, yeah.
But they looked at that. We continue like that.
I'm getting tired of the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I'm making a very short... It's something of a claim you need to do here.
I can't make it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, city council may consider discussing authorized progress on street sign installation.
Yes, we have purchased street signs. We've had some, some issues with the hardware. The pipe around town is difficult size. Chris E was wanting to know if we had a plan to start getting this in. And currently, we need to set some time aside, maybe every Friday or something, to have somebody go out and start trying to install the hardware on top of the signs. I think they have certain roadways already purchased, signs for the, the street signs are already purchased, they're sitting in our maintenance shop. We just got to get the hardware to get it on there. Some of it we could probably install now, the ones that we had in stock, and some of it will have to be creative on installation hardware. We'll start this Friday, rotate somebody to start getting those.
Should give some report at the next council meeting.
Yeah, yes. Now, do you want that to be an agenda item next meeting or just in the manager's notes?
Manager's notes.
Is that going to be signed all around the city or just on the streets?
Right now, it's, we're focusing on the ones that have missing signs. And I think we focus in south, you know, cross-street connections, that area, and then we'll kind of start working this way.
All right, city council may consider discussing authorized action to adopt a federal grant program for curbing policy. You should have that in the packet.
What this is, is we are going to, we're looking at applying for the downtown revitalization program grant. What this is, is basically going to be to refurbish some, some of the city sidewalks downtown in the commercial zones. Also, too, we're looking at getting a sidewalk, well, in the railroad area behind City Hall. Hopefully, the one next two or three blocks down, we'd like to have a sidewalk one through there. This would be a grant for that. We're going to have to study some of our streets downtown. This would not pertain to Eighth Street from Hutchins on. It would be for some of the other streets that...
Hutchins, Eighth Street, no.
Yes, yes. It would be for...
Who's Rich Albert?
Right, right. And for instance, there is a new cafe or restaurant that opened up, and there's a, the city owns the property site that would be a parking lot, or we would like it to be a parking lot. This grant would help turn that into a parking lot. It would also help some of the ADA issues that they have right there. It would help with the alleyways across the street from it where our truck has really destroyed the alley in that area and started beating into the brick road. And these are just some examples of areas that would help. Now, going to the procurement policy. The procurement policy is required by this grant that we have the procurement policy in place and adopted. I don't have to have that.
You did include it.
Okay.
It's basically just a policy that says if some, if an employee has conflict of interest that they'll get out of the process and use it.
Out of the procurement process. You did look it over and you're okay with it? So, or you got as okay with adopting it?
So tell me, anytime you go for a grant application like this, the city has to put a matching fund there?
Well, either matching funds or in time.
And then, you don't know what it would be?
I don't run off hand.
But I want the council to know because without getting the cart before the horse, when you go for an engineering firm, that's $60,000 or $70,000 right there.
Exactly, that's why all the six is safe.
That the city's going to have to help them.
They don't have to have engineers come in and lay it out before.
Because that was the same with Brownsville. And we had to pay the extreme engineering cost of 60%. Sam, you remember, extreme amount of money, and then we had to match the grants.
Right.
And what does it get down with the grant?
Well, it would depend on what we're asking for. For instance, if we are only doing two or three sidewalks downtown and maybe one in the back here, it would be, you know, maybe $150,000. If it's just the two or three streets, then maybe $50,000. I mean, it would really depend on, I mean, we'd have to look at our streets that we want to actually work on and then apply for that amount.
Tell me, with the research around this that's been in front of me today?
Yes.
I'm not fully aware of the financial status of the city at the present time. Back when we discussed this in '27, Steve? Steve came up with a machine and advised that we finish sidewalk painting, that I thought at the time was a really quiet. I wish, that's just me wishing, I wish there's an alternate computer to look at, that the city could get involved in rather than go out and just grant and engineers and say... Does Steve, if you don't mind refreshing my memory of that? It was a machine. What we were having problems with was the sidewalks uneven and people creaking on. And it was a sharpening machine to grind those edges off. But you see the state of the sidewalks being beyond that machine? Yeah, well, there was also, you know, a way to lift some of those sidewalks back in place. And then, you know, we did some repairs like during the fall, I guess. You know, that was done. I don't remember exactly what all it's been so long, you know? Remembrance not quite I could love.
But my question is, the engineering fee is going to override what we're looking for in grant. Man, we're going to have $40,000 or $50,000 worth of engineering expenses, and then maybe have to do a matching to a $150,000 grant.
Right. Well, it greatly depends on what we're going to ask it to do. Does that make sense?
Rick, back then, it was, and Sam probably knows too, it's about $60,000.
So it's $60,000 engineering fees for a $150,000 grant, and we're going to have matching funds. That doesn't make a lot of sense.
And I agree with you. Okay, what we're doing is, is, boundary needs this much grant, yet not at the expense, though, of, you know, something that large, right? You know, if it's not something that we can afford, then we won't do it.
But you have to pay the engineering fee.
You have to pay the engineering fees, but if you do the...
Why do they want to look at this?
If you move forward with it. Right. Now, if it's something that we don't want to apply for or do.
So you're going to hire an engineering firm to look at this, and you expect they don't require any reimbursement?
No. Okay, well, okay, what we're actually looking at now is just...
No reimbursement, but payment?
Well, you would be going out to bid, well, one, to get permission to go out to bid to hire a grant administrator, and permission to go out to bid to hire an engineer. That's all we're asking for. Now, doesn't mean that we're going to hire them, doesn't mean that we're going to apply for it, we're just asking for permission to go out to bid.
At this point, what's the cost of going out to bid?
I can buy, I can buy the...
It costs nothing to go out and bid.
That's what I was saying.
Just, just to look at it.
See who's going to come in, see what they, going to make this later on in the month.
Right. See, the thing is, there's a deadline for this grant to even apply. And you got to have your, everything out to bid and closed before the deadline, okay? Now, before we make a determination whether we even want to use it or not, okay, we need to go ahead and go out to bid, our permission to go out to bid for a grant administrator, and permission to go out to bid for the engineer. And it's not that we're going out to bid the grant right now. We're just looking to go out to bid for a grant administrator so we can get them in that can, you know, help us through this process if we choose to go through it. It costs nothing.
Well, if it...
I could go along the back.
If the Michigan Grimes predictability factor, all of this, it's going to be high.
It may not be something we choose to do. It may be something we can do ourselves.
No, I could buy a new Schneer.
I don't care. Right. But, but I mean, we have to figure out what those were actually, what sidewalks we would be looking at before we went for it.
I think we'll look at, too, when this came up a couple of years ago, there was a lot of opposition to it because some of the businesses in town, they didn't own all that. Jack Amber and everything else going on in that contract with the new stuff. So got a concern about the streets we're going to be doing, we're going to have to talk to some business owners and see if they're going to do it.
I think the ones that want it now, that need it now, actually want it.
Well, I mean, there are going to be some businesses that...
Because of my ADA, Ricky.
ADA, I take issue with this. Ricky was one of the signatures on a petition against a sidewalk renovation.
Right, right.
But, uh, I would hope that you would survey the business owners impacted, but that's actually what it's affecting.
Right, right. And it may be, you know, or be, you know, an individual business. Like, for instance, uh, the business across the street from the post office.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they might, they're gonna greatly benefit from this.
That tree is really torn up there.
It is.
They don't really need to fix it, looks like tripping has none of this business there.
Right. Well, and, and there's a wall, retaining wall there that was part of the old building.
Something like that.
Yeah, that tree on the corner is just a mole that's.
Right. And, and, and if they would like this, you know, it's there for them. And nobody else particularly has to be affected. You know, the, the guy across the street probably won't be affected by it. Uh, unless we're doing the alleyway right there. And he may want that fixed also. I mean, we'd have to talk to him and see. So this is gonna be a case by case basis as to what we can do, what we can't do. And again, we might not even do it. It may be cost prohibitive, you know, because of the engineering fees or because of the, the, uh, you know, if it's an eighty, twenty grant, we may not be able to put up to twenty percent.
Right.
Right? But we need to stop and look at it before, you know, we just let it go by.
Right.
I mean, you, you know, if you don't apply or if you're not looking at it, then you're leaving, you possibly leaving money on the table. So, this is hard to say until you stop and take a look at it.
Mr. Emmer, I'm ready to make that motion.
All right. Now, should I now prepare the grant, put along the criminal policy, please?
Some of the.
Second?
And it includes engineering services or a part of the.
That's next.
Of this, yeah. You know, some of the.
Second?
Second.
All fair to say aye. All right, City Council may consider discussing authorized action to authorize a solicitation of or appealing for administration engine contracts associated with the twenty nineteen downtown revitalization program grants.
Uh, just to pull up from the middle, that's fine.
Yeah, and Ricky was in that discussion.
When the entry.
Second?
Second.
All fair to say aye.
Aye.
All right, City Council may consider discussing authorized action to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dispatching contract with Harrah's County. Does that impact it as well?
This came to us, uh, and basically what this is, this is a yearly contract we have in Harrah's County, uh, for dispatching services. Typically it comes coinciding hand in hand with the, uh, the fire department, uh, contract that we have with Harrah's County. And basically, they pay the city for fire department services, I believe it's ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It used to be thirty, but now they dropped to ten.
They dropped to ten, but they're going up to fifty-five.
Well, this is, the, the reason that it's not coinciding this year. Okay, uh, and this is something that, that we may need to table and talk further about because I don't know, or we might need to talk to the fire department and see, have y'all had meetings lately in the county?
We're on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Okay.
About all y'all there?
I was gonna make them listen, but they're late for.
We're gonna do.
I don't want.
Did you say the thirteenth?
Well.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
And, and talk them to the county. They will, they would like very much to give more money to the fire department. In turn, they would like us to give more money for dispatching services.
Of course. That would work.
Yeah, when it comes to what we're talking about.
They're giving ten and we're giving fifty?
Yeah. Well, yeah, but if they increase to fifteen thousand and we're giving fifty-five, it's a wash.
It's a little bit.
It's actually taking five thousand out of one, one of our pockets and putting it back in another of our pockets.
We're asking for fifty in three years.
Right.
Two thousand, ten thousand, thirty thousand.
Okay. All right. So, uh, seeing how y'all's, uh, the, the meeting for the county is on the thirteenth.
We're.
We can all.
I, I would suggest that we might table this so we can get a little further, a little more information.
We did, uh, we'll table this.
Yes, I agree.
This is in balance.
Well, it might, it might, it's hard to say.
I think we need to help them learn to try to get communication, I mean, for the county through there. I mean, if all the smaller cities have that on this, we can get the communication.
Winters and Miles play a lot less than us, I think it was twenty thousand.
Winters went up.
Yeah, they're going up, running out of.
Five hundred and fifty.
Fifteen we were and then Winters was thirty-five and Miles was twenty.
I have a wrong face.
Yeah, I was looking at the.
You're talking dispatch?
Yeah, I was looking at the county books today over that just to see.
Is it, or Winters face, thirty-nine and going up, another?
They're getting, they're getting about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year out of those little cities to.
I think it's seventy-five.
For the fire.
And really be honest with you, I haven't seen dispatch get raised ever since they've been.
They've been trying to get another hit.
They're calling dispatch services, it's fine, give it dispatch's pace.
Well, I, I think they're trying to add an employee is what it is.
That's what.
Well, maybe still.
You've been requesting for them for a while.
Yeah. So, yeah, that would be my suggestion is to, uh, table this until, until we see what happens with the, uh, fire department.
I think most would table this.
Second? All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right, City Council may consider discussing authorized action to approve nominations for the board directors in Harrah's County. If you have the list in your package.
I have a question. We have two lists, we have on the model, we supposed to have one here? Yeah, we have the boundary one and the right after the models. I didn't know that was a stake, so I was kinda, just kinda stumped on that.
I'm not sure that's, this is what they sent to me.
The first one says, uh, city boundary at the top, the second one's the city miles. So we're supposed to.
The same people.
Yeah, definitely, that's what, I was kinda stumped. Well, I mean, I don't know if we get to, I don't think we should, should put any money for miles. Uh, I think it's.
It's further cleared.
But not in package. Well, just send it out.
Right.
So Pat, Controller's office, don't we have to do this every, in the fall of every odd, odd number of years?
I don't know.
I think it's every three years.
So it's in three, and their website says the fall of a lot of number of years. So I don't remember doing this.
Yeah, we've got it every year and about this and here, so it's over twenty-one, twenty-one, so this is net part.
Every year or?
No, every year.
I think it's probably a good one.
This is my personal opinion, I think they'll have some information.
I know. I talked to, uh, Alvin and, uh, Paul Scott, and he said it's every three years. He says, and this, I'm being a paperless week, but he says in the, they send out the ballots in August, they get them back in September and then they do the election. Uh, but he says it's every three years and one of the things they hadn't been doing, and Sam, you probably know this, is they were supposed to stagger them, but they haven't staggered them. So now they're having some director serve next year, so they can stagger them where they're supposed to be. You know, where not everybody's getting elected the same year.
You know, so.
Uh, that's what they're working on, that's what he told me, uh, last week on, on his day.
So, just to clarify, cause I don't know how this works either, you don't learn. Um, we make the nominations and then they make the ballot, we're those all the group that does. Does that work?
Well, we would make the nomination, but I believe also, uh, the, our representative right now is Alvin Dunn for the city of Ballenger. He's also representative for the ISD and the hospital district. So they're gonna, I guess, go through the same process.
So we nominate for our portion and then you said there's some ballots involved. Who are those ballots, who's voting on our nominations?
Are they like two of our nominations and they go?
Is it like who gets the most nominations or is there some actual, I have to check, yes, here, I have to check, yes, there, kind of thing, by somebody? That's the part I'm confused on. What are our nominations actually accomplished?
Where do these go, Sam?
They go back to them and then after everybody has turned in all their selections, then they, like the person that everybody selects.
Who's they, when you say they select?
The board.
So that board's gonna take our nominations into consideration and do what they want?
Conceivably, the, the school district and the highest, I mean, the, the ISD and the hospital board and the city. You pay three different people. Right, right. So then they have to make some sort of selection.
That's what I'm getting at, those, is we're trying to nominate, you know, that's not an official appointment.
Right, we're just nominating.
The city selects and nominates the person at the end.
That's okay.
Therefore, just like she's saying, is we have, basically we select a person, we count as.
Two hundred and fifty?
Votes. Miles counts as a hundred and something, Winters counts as.
So our nominations get counted at which one got the most nominations? Okay.
It says we'd be five.
Yeah, we're gonna do five.
We're gonna do five. And they only gave us five.
They gave us the five terminals we could reach at, or we could write in five.
Correct.
We've gone here.
So, Pat, are there any criteria here? I know you can't be behind on taxes and things like that.
Can't be employee with tax, so your councilman can be. The director must reside in the district for at least two years, maybe proceed to the bank or chain type office. You can't, if they're delinquent, you can't serve. That's bad.
So we need to, if we have a nomination, all of us, I'll give it back to, O'Nita is in back to.
Okay.
The hundreds, I mean, I don't have a printout of it, so I can. I didn't print it out, that one page.
I have spare.
Well, this is someone who could actually.
We could move it to the next meeting, right? That's not the thing.
We need to move.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a case.
It's not each individual, it's all of us can.
Oh, this is one, we have one page, we're gonna decide five.
That, that's the. We can.
We've discussed amongst ourselves which five we move.
Well, and we can, we don't have to decide something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's do that next meeting.
Would you have the executive or how do we?
The executive.
No.
I'll do it.
That's fine with me, cause if we set some time.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing together.
I don't know.
We can save some time to, to figure out if we wanna do these type people or if we have to do somebody, you know, from all that's in our head.
Sure, sure.
And have a free.
But you can check with that person, make sure they're not being.
Some people just need to be.
Well, uh, mainly we, we need to get this out to you guys.
Right. I mean, we can understand it better now. I was like, what?
It's the first time we're speaking.
Yeah.
Have to get this.
Okay, so we'll table it till, until, until the last one, last meeting. I'll make a motion to table this nomination till the next, uh, county.
Second? All fair to say aye?
All right.
All right, City Council may consider discussing take action on following charter election.
Uh, as y'all know, we've been working on the, uh, revised revision of the city charter for a long, well, several months now. It's gone through committee, uh, committees made, uh, not decisions, it's made recommendations, uh, has been working diligently, I think, for months. Uh, we need to call the election before the nineteenth, which means we need to decide to move forward with what we've got as far as city propositions, I believe there's twenty now? Was, there was twenty one, you already dropped one?
I think it was just twenty, I think.
I know our, our, our friends in the newspaper have been, uh, they've had, uh, one or two or three propositions that we try and explain. Yeah, we're, we're running, uh, and it depends on how long the proposition is, I've got it pretty few, so. And, uh, so, you know, we don't wanna bore people like newspapers can do at times, uh, make it too dry. So we're just running what we can, uh, like I said, depending on length, cause I think the entire charter is like, they're propositioned like fifteen thousand words or something like that. Right. Uh, so just running them one or two or three at a time, depending on length, so that we can get the information out there. And what we're putting in the newspaper is strictly what they're putting in the charter. I'm not putting any Indian enjoyed, there's no reading in. Now, there will be some, we'll elaborate later on once we get all the propositions in the paper. Uh, but I'll elaborate on those after I talk to Christie and some other charter committee members. Uh, but yeah, then we will have all of them in there, uh, by the end of October, so everybody will have them before November. Right. And basically, we're, we're putting these propositions out to voters so they can choose to vote on these propositions and make the changes, whatever proposed changes they are or not. So, I mean, that's long and short.
And we need to decide, hey, are we going to put all of the propositions on there, are we gonna pick a few and put on there? Um, I have just a few questions. Um, you know, I think it's probably just from three, if there were just a few outstanding questions.
We'll be very tough.
Yeah, so that's basically the only one. I think it's, I think it's good, but I just wanna clarify. With Pat.
Would Pat be good to answer your questions, Christian?
Um, okay, so, I know I've asked multiple times, but sometimes it's hard to, to read it. I know I've read our notes that we have from our charter meetings, but, um, so as far as PD goes, um, if, if that proposal passes, you will be running the day to day managing at the police department, but when it comes to hiring and firing, um, that has to be collaborative with the chief and, and, well, as far as hiring, you must scan or who does the chief has, has to agree.
That's correct.
Um, and if you bring someone you, you have, y'all both have to agree. Um, that's for hiring and firing.
Yes.
Um, for, for Tommy to be able to hire or fire a chief.
Not Tommy.
The city manager, yeah, city manager, city manager and chief, yeah. Um, that would have to come from council, cause that's a kind of a department.
The confirmation of the police chief and was a hiring of him or the removal has to go to, um, city council.
So what happens, say, if a chief resigns, then who decides who replaces the chief?
The, um, city manager will appoint, come to you as an arm candidate and y'all will.
And we confirm.
And we confirm, okay. Um, I, the way that the newspaper read, it said something about, um, the city manager can terminate an officer, but I'm not sure if it was referencing a police officer or maybe an officer of court, cause the way I understood it was, um, any, any nominations.
Well, it was talking about department heads and.
That's what I thought it did, but it read kind of funny, so I wanted to clarify that, that, that the city manager can't fire a police officer. Uh, it has to be the chief and Tommy together to decide that, is that correct?
The police chief has the call to remove him and he just has to get the city consent, city manager.
And that's one of the ones we're gonna elaborate on and get with y'all later on, uh, because we do need to kind of clarify that. You know, when I got it, it had the red in there, the, the ones that closed changes and changes. Uh, so there are some of them that we, and that's one of the main ones we really need to look into and get a lot of information out there. Cause I think there's some misinformation out there and some people we just don't know and so we just need to.
Really simplify it too, because it, I mean, it can get confusing.
Right, and right now, like I said, it's just straight verbatim what I've sent, so, uh, I'm just putting it out there so people can read it and y'all close it and, you know, everything goes forward without, you know, my worthless input. So, but yeah, he will, I do wanna elaborate on some of those too.
Question I've got is like the section fourteen oh two is talking about the city manager appointing additional policemen, clerks and employees in the department of police, it may be considered necessary. And the chief of police shall nominate to the city manager such persons he may consider suitable for policemen, clerks and employees. Well, to me, that is the chief's job to do that, but I don't think the city manager should be appointing any additional police.
With the chief nominating to him?
Well, if the chief, the way I think it all says the chief, in other words, I'm saying the wording is, to me is kind of ambiguous if you, do you, and, and then it talks about, uh, the city manager has the right and have to reject any nomination and require another nomination to be made by the chief of police, continuing this procedure until a person is found who is acceptable to the chief and the city manager. Well, oh, I'm not real sure that if the city manager doesn't want to accept a nomination from the chief and he says you have to find somebody else and it keeps going on and on and on until the city manager gets what he wants.
That's kind of what it works.
Uh, I like with the chief bringing somebody, he's, the chief of police brings somebody a nomination and he's already done a background check. I like with the chief bringing somebody, he's, the chief of police brings somebody a nomination, and he's already done a background check on him, and knows his thing, everything, I don't see, I can't.
It's a place to say that has to come in pretty, I mean, it's not standard.
Well, all I took was the existing charter provision, which said the city council would certainly approve it, this is, I didn't change up the structure of the paragraph. All I did was put in city administrator instead of city council, so they don't want to reject.
It's the same way it worked before.
Same way we're operating now.
The other chief, you recommend?
Well, yeah, if it would, if it's a council manager form of government, it's the city.
Pretty much in one another, probably a couple hundred, whatever.
Our charter doesn't read like this exactly, it, it just, I mean, we could delete these provisions, basically, the earlier part of that provision, really, where all employees are underneath the city administrator, except the city judge, city attorney. And basically, that means essentially, city administrators and all others, and that's kinda the way ours is, we don't go into a lot of detail of the police department at all.
Any issues?
Say again.
Any issues?
I guess I just had a thought that if the chief and the city manager conflicted one another.
The conflict, you want to bring it up to the new city chief.
Where the change point is, but with the ability to bring all this to council.
Yeah, I mean, also, the city administrator's accountable to the council.
That's what we're here for, we, we check and balance it all.
And, and, you know, of course, I mean, the idea is, is that, you know, one person, ultimately, we're making the city administrator responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city, more than in the past, since we had council approving all hires, and council basically running the police department, so to speak, uh, at least being acting as the direct supervisor of the chief, which is awful. Because y'all are a collective body, that every time you meet, you can't, you know, just get any advice independently, you have to meet and involve as a board, here it is, issues, and then they, you know, and so it's, that's a tough thing to do. But the, you know, essentially, it's, you hope that there is a clean, you know, collaborative effort of the police chief with the city administrator manager to get the best employees he can get. And ultimately, that's, I hope the goal of everybody involved, and if there's a difference of opinion, and the city manager says, you know, I like that guy, or had problems with him in the past, and I'm not gonna agree with that. At the end of the day, y'all can always talk to the city manager about it, and it's with the chief, the executive side, and if there's a tie has to be broken, you can discuss it. I mean, ultimately, I mean, you have to, you have to get along, it's, you know, this is, I'd say.
What's the overall consensus of council as far as the charter? Every meeting we have something pop up that we don't agree with, that we don't understand, we don't understand the merits. And I know we worked hard on it, but here's my thing, is I think we pushed it so hard, trying to make a deadline, rather than just sit back and really look at it, absorb it, and get it down and do it right.
Hold on, thing answers is not right.
That's up to council. And also, uh, going forward, I mean, we can do this in May, rather than pushing, try to do it in November.
Then we have to pay like eight thousand dollars on the reelection.
Is it, is it ready?
It's not ready yet, I mean, I don't have to call, I don't have to draft the ordinance. So I've gotten a call from a couple of councilmen, basically saying they're concerned about going forward right now, they wondered why. So that's why I wanted it on the agenda, to make sure that we're ready to go before I spend the time to deal with it, so.
So, I think it boils down to the conference you have with your city manager, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it.
So, and I've flipped on this a little bit, I've looked around with my dogs about three hours, day before yesterday, and I agree with this. But you put a lot of work into this, this one is headed to committee, they put a lot of work in. So, I just see the council as being the ultimate authority. If there's a deep state out there, some shadow figures, have a problem with Tommy having too much control, didn't get rid of Tommy, or rein him in. But I've changed my current state of wanting to just say to go full force ahead in its entirety, that's me.
Sorry, we push it forward, we work on it a lot, talk about it a lot, pass a lot of work into it, I don't think we stop now.
I just had a few questions, I wanted to make sure it was, wanted to reaffirm one more time that, that it was the way we had set up.
Just to clarify, make sure we all understood.
I just wanted to be justifiable on this truthful reason.
Yeah, this, this is really, that proposition, number three, is the big one, and it is the change to council manager form of government. Most home rule cities have council manager forms of government, and, um, when we adopted our charter back in the sixties, uh, we basically left it to hybrid. Council is acting, when you were a general law city before the home rule, basically, council would approve all hires, that's the way it is. You could hire a city administrator and delegate something, but at the end of the day, you still have the final say on hires. So that's kinda the way they carried it through on the charter, the initial charter, and so that's what we're revisiting here. And that's, as you see, that's the big section, and it basically, in the broadest terms, it places the hiring and supervision and termination of all employees of the city under the city administrator, except the city attorney and the city, uh, city judge. And so, um, that means in the future now, all department heads have to be, if there's termination of them and hiring of them, have to be approved by the council, uh, that's typical. And so, everybody else is purely underneath the, um, the city manager, that's the simplistic way to do it. And that's what the first power of the city council kinda sets out, that, uh, it will, what's your power, if they have to. Ultimately, you have the power, um, the city administrator is responsible to you. And so that's kinda more of like a, you know, so y'all hiring and firing employees, y'all will essentially hire him, and you hire him, to run the city, the day-to-day operations. That's how council manager forms of government work.
I'd like for, for, we get caught up in micromanaging, get burdened by society issues, we shouldn't be burdened by it, so, I'm waiting for you to see it with yourself.
Me too.
Who ready for that question?
Motion to call the charter election.
Motion to call the charter election.
Well, at this point, all you really, I need is direction to get the order trade for the, uh, for the next meeting, so you can basically, you will approve that ordinance, calling the election.
Second.
I'll hear it.
Okay.
Alright, City Council may consider discussing authorized actions to afford vid for health, dental, vision and life insurance coverage for city employees.
We have asked, uh, station ticket, did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, do you have those, those documents, I don't know, did everybody get the handouts?
Those in the blue?
Yes, well, this one's actually for something different, yeah. Uh, we also, yeah, it's more than, yeah. Basically, what we did, we went up and did for six twenty-five extra, uh, we used a couple of, what else do we use? We currently have TML, which is Texas Municipal League Insurance. Okay, we currently use Texas Municipal League Insurance, uh, and we were stopping around trying to see what's out there, if we could get a better deal. We got in three bids, one was from station ticket, one was from Cross Insurance, and, and their brokers, they, uh, they represented Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and United Healthcare, which basically, TML is United Healthcare. And, uh, so, we've got a lot of different choices to review, uh. What we're handing out here is the, basically, the tabulation, uh, for the, uh, Blue Cross and Shield, and what TML is offering. This additional medical plan that was handed out to you, uh, is a last-minute addition as of today from TML. So, we were looking to make our, our, kind of work or decision, but because TML has come back in with, uh, some additional information, we might need to stop and, and look at this a little bit longer, uh, to see if we can make an accurate, uh, decision.
Well, one thing I was considering, like, the one that TML here today doesn't have a annual important contribution amount at the bottom, so we can see the difference of what their new, well, last minute thing was compared to what we just got.
Right, I'm going to ask our, our guys here to help explain what TML is gonna be doing, on this, on this little handout.
Well, the last day, they did do the math with the bottom while we're talking, because, you know, this is the last year, I understand that, okay? This, along the sheets, we went over because it was the original, and we updated them because the census changed, okay, because, you know, every employee's got one, and plus also that Blue Cross rates adjust quarterly. So before they were July first, it would have been ten on effective date, so those also adjusted that way. So those rates have been updated to the correct census as of a day or two ago, Friday, I guess, Friday, right, two, three. So we took off all the people that left, added the correct ones, it's the best strategy we can have about those numbers, right? And then updated for October race with Blue Cross, now, TML, that's not gonna affect them, okay, because, you know, we have a legal hedge block solid. But originally, we had asked for TML bids to give, give us option to have more than one plan. These TML bids here, these three, you can only have one plan. They wouldn't do like Blue Cross, and let us, Blue Cross will actually let you have as many as three HMO and three PDL plans you want to. That'd be overkill, but you could have six plans if you want to. City manager with these, man, you only have one. Two-page sheet with the five plans, four on the front, one on the back, you just got, you can have all five of them if you want. You have to take at least two, you can have two to five.
And then we see, that's why I need to, I need to say.
If you got four plans on the front, you have them. It's an HSA plan on the back, with no copays, that's still the, the first four plans on top are copays. So, a few differences we tried to highlight, you see the little, that light round there, in the TML bid? It's just a little TML first, on this page, hot, TML option two and three. Your current plan is that choice plus current plan. And you see at the bottom, it's sixty-nine-two forty, that's a three percent rate reduction on what it was. So we already got a three percent decrease now, it was seven hundred and something, so that's reflected. TML also, they had a meeting with the whole policy TML, and they allocated so many dollars to the whole block of business, and city of Allinger can take off four hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents a month off each bill, if you agree with them. Just a little bit of legal there, yeah, it ends up being five thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Now, that's not all near anywhere, but it's in the math. So it's just a little parry incentive for TML's business, that'd be about ten dollars a month, a month as well, if you're up. And then you see two plans there, the options, the difference is, you lose your grandfather plan, you can never go back and get it, okay? And you see, uh, the PCP specialist copays are thirty dollars. So you look to the right, the difference would be, the PCP's still thirty, but specialist would now be forty-five, that we put in the kinda light brown. But also, the difference under that diagnostic test x-ray in lab would now be covered under that office visit copay, which on your grandfather plan, they are not. So that'd be kinda a trade-off of becoming non-grandfather, that's the, was a forty-five dollar copay. Probably, it's even better in the long run, people, if people go get lab x-ray, at least it is, because that can be rather expensive. So that forty-five dollars, you know, could be thirty for PCP or forty-five for specialist, let me back up a little bit, because you could, but either way, now who you saw, the thirty or forty-five, okay, they would cover your x-ray and layup under that copay. Current plan is not, so that's part of the biggest difference, beside your deductibles. You see the top twelve fifty, fifteen hundred, or two thousand up there. The maximum out-of-pocket's pretty close, you see the individual out-of-pocket by that GF currently sixty-two fifty, you come to the fifteen hundred, it's five thousand, the two thousand, six thousand. So not a tremendous amount of difference in there. But now, if you go to non-grandfathered plan, that second and third plan, once you meet your copays, they all go away. For grandfather plans, you have to continue copays, and actually goes up to like seventy-nine hundred or something after that sixty-two fifty.
You lost me, hold on.
I know, there's a lot of stuff on this page.
When we were talking about out-of-pocket, and then you skipped to the grandfather or something?
Well, sorry.
Where are we there?
This is your non-grandfathered plan, anything else will be non-grandfathered. And once you lose your grandfather status, you can never go back and get it, that's the fourth one for that one.
Okay.
So it's coming out, here's your out, half the out-of-pocket, and here's your deductibles. But here, you're never treaty a hundred percent, taking with your copay, you pay what they're saying, right? Here, once you leave these out-of-pocket maximums, your copays go away. So there's a couple of things that are non-grandfathered there, your copays go away, you need the national out-of-pocket, and it's, it's, this is the first year TML's ever gonna do this, is your, is they're gonna add these options to include lab and x-ray under the office visit copay. And then, the seventy-five dollars down there would be another challenge, you can see that the urgent care copay would go from thirty to seventy-five. So we tried to highlight those changes, and then you see the teledoc copay would go from ten to zero. So those little, in the light brown, highlighted some of the changes to point out, and I guess really I should say, your drug card, you look there in the middle, prescription drug card position, uh, prescription, you see they're all the same, but they all change, you can't, that grandfather plan even change. There's, you know, I wondered how they could do that, the grandfather plan really can't change, but I guess they figured out a way to tweak it, okay? But you can see there, there's a zero for disease management maintenance, a ten. But you can see there, there's a 0 for disease management maintenance, a $10 for generic, 40 for preferred brand, 70 for non-preferred. And then underneath that, you see they have a $100 copay for biosimilar, the biologic drugs, and 150 for cost share. Biosimilar, gonna be rheumatoid cancer, and that's things like that. Your cost share, 150, are gonna be, they're really high-dollar drugs. Usually brand-new, probably the ones you see advertised on TV, that YouTube viewed those. So that'll be the same on any TML plans, and then you can see the rates at the bottom, the 69240 for current, goes 68, 68750, and the 1500, 64790, and the 2,000. And there's the annual totals. Now, you have that, oh, I should mention, at the very bottom, probably will affect much people, that could be important, if that non-preferred, brand-name drug is taken with generics available, insured, you pay the $70 plus the actual price difference from generic and the non-preferred drug. But it's, they're kind of pushing generic, obviously. The second sheet with the Blue Cross, you have TML, again, just your current plan, and then three Blue Cross plans. The advantage HMO is obviously cheaper, because you have a limited network, you have to pick a PCP. So in the middle of the page, you know, we did PCP required, we put yes on HMO in red, so nobody missed that. So if you took the HMO plan, anybody covered, whether it be employee, dependant, whoever, have to pick a primary care doctor, you go see them for your routine allowance, and they refer to you to specialists if you need to go see them. Big deal with the HMO, you look at the very bottom in blue, the Shannon's not in the Blue Cross HMO. Now, we've listed other ones, Abilene's made the switch. Hendrix used to be, but Hendrix and Abilene Regional Health, they're in now. And you see that.
So is Community Hospital.
Community Hospital's in.
In the city.
We're not. Yeah. You see, in the PPO, you see all of the differences, Shannon's in. The very bottom, the HMO is not. So that'd be all. And the closest one besides that's actually Freddie's, but as far as I still know. So we've got a whole bunch of them anymore. Those are two, I think, of, in our area, that we service, we make sure we point out to people. Now, you can see PPO choices, too, are out there, they're a lot more pricey, because you, you know, you don't have a gatekeeper, because it's supposed to be a PCP, and because you, the management's where you go. I guess another example I should point out, it's not an HMO, the Indiana. Okay? Just good people like to know that. There's a PPO, not HMO. And you see the drug cards that all change, there, they have a sixth tier in the middle. You see 0 is preferred generic, 10's non-preferred generic, 100 preferred brand, or 50 preferred brand, 100 non-preferred brand, 150 preferred specialty, and 250 non-preferred specialty. So you can kind of compare that with the drug card over to the left with TML. Because either plan you pick, with TML, is the same copays, either plan you pick with Blue Cross, is the same copays for drugs. Now, I'm jumping around, and yeah, Chris, you'll fust at it probably, but then back up the buzz of the PCP and the specialist, you see it's, you see the 230s there for TML, with PCP and specialist, right here?
Okay.
Okay? Across there, now you see for the Blue Cross, it's 30 for PCP and 60 for specialist, for HMO. And the 3,0250 deductible with Blue Cross is 40 and 70, the 1500 is 30 and 60. And none of those plans cover x-ray lab and office visit copay like the new TML plans. You can see the rates. So you wanna look as close as you could to apples and apples, if that's possible. You can see the, and I'm gonna discard the HMO's not apples and apples for now, but you could take it. But this Blue Cross PPO at 1500 deductible, and we look at the TML, if I can do this without putting all of it over, maybe. The TML 1500 deductible, you can kind of compare those, and that would be kind of close. So that middle 1500 deductible, on the TML page, is 68750. And you can see the Blue Cross 1500 deductible is 73626. Did I read it, everybody?
Most of them.
Okay. This 1500 deductible, that's a 1500 TML, which one has just TML bids on it. Okay, it's 68750.
I thought this was the TML.
I haven't got to that yet, sorry. I'm fixing to do that.
Just show me.
Right here. And now, I'm sorry, I just, 68750, everybody find that one?
Good.
Then, look, with Blue Cross, and the one on the right, is a 1500 deductible, that's 73626. Those are the closest two I knew of. I hope it, it's close.
Sir, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I know you guys all have hidden beliefs, but, from the simplest, I have a very simple one, for family members, I just need to know how much it is for family members all the time, I'm trying.
They're all.
That's where I'm breaking.
Yeah, well, they're all way too high, but, we're gonna address that.
I got 12 different prices, basically, to answer your question.
Okay. When will we see those, that's, that's.
Yes, if you're here, if you look in the bottom of that.
These are add-on rates, cover your dependent shot under.
If you look at the bottom, right here, each of your prices, okay, they add, this is the employee only, 40-plus spouse.
So they cover the employee only?
Right.
And then the 40-plus spouse, so say on this very first TML plan, 40-plus spouse, they would have to pay 730 dollars to add a spouse?
No, so that's, that's gonna be your, that's gonna be your, what's taken out of your check.
Holy Hannah. Holy Hannah. So is it 713, or is it the difference between a 692 and a 713?
We, we may, but these are add-on rates, I'm gonna have to do that again. So you can add these rates off, so those are extra rates to cover dependents. This sheet, because we just got it, does not, they're included, so you'd have to subtract the employee only from this page.
But we're gonna come back with, uh, something that looks very similar, because not only did the TML rates change, the Blue Cross and Blue Shield rates changed as well, because of the timing, right? So, we've got another pricing sheet, okay, that, that we need to kind of incorporate in all this. But, from what it looked like, uh, see, when he said, the new, the new pricing, the new structure, what TML has done, which they've never done before, they're gonna allow us to, to, well, similar to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we can offer more than one plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna do next, if you, if we gotta take a little more time, you have to do it. These five plans next, you can offer two to five of them, you can offer them all if you want to. Now, to get you the payment rates, you're gonna have to subtract the coming employee, the apples and apples. But they are less, and here's your, the one to compare again, the bottom left, 1500 deductible. You see that? That's the same plan as the 1500 deductible in the middle of the long sheet, the TML. You see that rate was 68750, this rate is 65326, it's $34.24 cheaper enough for the same plan. And it is also cheaper for the dependents. And I agree, it's way too high, but it's cheap.
If you had employee plus children, if you had four children, you'd just pay about 500, is it?
Unless it doesn't matter how many kids you have.
But it's just the difference on 653 and 1141.
1141, yeah.
What was that lives coming, I'm sorry? It says lives, and then 41.
To see how many, you got 41 employees on the count, two people covered here in one family, but they had corrected that, it's really just two people covered dependents. One family and one child, because TML didn't know that when they sent us this. Our other sheet, we correctly hit, that's 41, 1141. They won't.
I didn't limit it, now, or what, other ones you want?
So, my thought is, if you're gonna switch to TML, I think you would, not just my thought, you'd go away from your grandfather plan, to get office, lab and x-ray covered in the copay, you could decide which base plan the city's gonna pay for, employees could buy for better coverage if they want, or if there's a lower plan they pick, you know, then maybe they could put that money toward their dependent premium or HSA, put in their HSA account. Just, you know, you don't have to offer all five of them, but, you know, that's a possibility, at least what you could do to try to order dependent rates. Now, my thinking is, you'd be one of these down here, but I, that's y'all's call, I don't know. No, is it better, have the better benefits, then, you know, folks, they cover dependents as well, I'm gonna need someone else.
I think our primary complaint that I have heard is, in our personal experience, when we worked at these, I have to work at the city, was, we couldn't cover any of the other family.
Right.
So even got a different job, because we couldn't afford, on the salary, to pay for insurance for me, or definitely not me and the kids, this is not, it's better.
So.
We're hopeful that we had, no, kind of, just giving you a picture, that's exactly what it's kind of.
And it's, that's why I spread, never works, I mean, that's just the way, there's reality, these rates are that high.
It's not worth it.
Some people, some companies not subsidizing the dependents.
Well, that's what happens, you know, like.
With more employees, or.
Right.
Or.
You know, as the city, you know, we look at what we have here, okay, what, what the employee's gonna have to pay, their contribution, and then what we're doing, okay? And at the very bottom, is our contribution, to how it was set up right now, if you look, okay?
Okay, you have a particular line?
Any of them.
Okay, bottoms.
Okay, this one, so there are four on it.
Okay, uh, this is, TML, or are you looking at Blue Cross?
Blue Cross.
Blue Cross.
Okay, if you look at the very, at this one right here, this column, at the very bottom, it's the annual employer contribution, that's gonna be 371,075.
Okay.
Okay, the next line is 316,000, and 252, that's gonna be for the HMO, and then 348, 969,000. Now, if we choose to, uh, pay more, then, then they'll cover more of the dependents.
Cover more within the budget.
Right.
But we have, I don't want, we have some money in our budget, it's a take anymore.
That's, that's, yeah, I mean, we, we'll do that in our budget, but, but, I mean, this is what you're looking at, as far as what the city pays for insurance, okay, on a yearly basis.
Are we supposed to vote on this tonight?
No, no, this is giving you information.
Okay.
This, this is what this is. Now, what, what we plan to do, this, well, since we had new information today, about four o'clock, okay, we gotta reevaluate, kind of where we're at, and, and everything's basically the same, there'll be some updated numbers, but it's not gonna be 10% off here or there. Okay, so, what we're gonna do is plug in this new information, and now, TML has the ability to give us more than one plan, and what, what our goal was to do is, to bring them back and talk to the employees, and give them some of this information, and see what, 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 out of the five plans for TML, which ones would we most likely want? Okay, we may just wanna offer two, okay?
But at some point, there's gonna be a step, right, in the day.
Yes, at some point, we're gonna come back to the council, and ask for approval for this plan or that plan.
Thank you.
So y'all don't have to bill tonight, right?
No, not for this.
So you have the opportunity to give some, where you have been.
Yes. And, yeah, and we need it, because, because currently, right now, there's only two people with the city that have dependents covered, right? Which, I mean, a lot of our employees have children, so obviously, they're not.
Being employed.
Right.
All our staffers.
Now, I'm just like, we need coffee.
Well, we'll get that to the employees, I mean, and, because y'all need to make a decision, and a forward decision on how we wanna head. Uh, you know, I can't make a decision for you, or for Heidi, or for Chris, or for Stan. You know, if we all wanna make a collective decision together, what's gonna be best for us and the whole, right? You pick your plan, you pick yours, and we'll get together and see what we kind of wanna do. This is how we, we're hoping to do this, uh, you know, as soon as Friday possibly.
And no, no offense, but just listening to the explanation, it just looks like TML has moved things around to make it look like they're giving you savings. It doesn't look like they're giving you savings.
Well.
So, that's why I wanna see it physically, you know, physically, I just kind of.
At the onset, I think you're correct, I was, I personally am not real pleased with TML going through this process, but, they have stepped up, and.
Probably because they knew we were hunting on them.
That is correct, but that's why you hunt around, that's why you don't just automatically renew every year, right? You, you go look for different pricing. Okay, they know we're on the hunt, and they come up with this, a really good offer that we kind of really need to investigate. I mean, I owe it to, to everybody, to stop and look at it, and see if this is something good for us as employees.
And TML, I don't know if there's a rep here for TML, if you are, you can go ahead and tell your board what I said as an employee, if you'd have done this in the beginning, we probably would have been a lot more loyal to your company.
Again, that's exactly what I told them. In fact, I refused to talk to them at one point, because they could have done this years ago.
Correct.
Right? So.
So what actions do we need to take tonight?
Uh, I would suggest we enable this at the moment.
Okay.
So, so we can get a bigger, a better picture of, of what they're offering with the new pricing, or the new, the new offer, basically. And then, we can offer, or talk amongst ourselves as employees, and then, bring a rep in.
Oh, so.
Exactly. And then bring a representation to the council.
If this gentleman's true, I'll happily make that move.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll tell you one thing.
Okay.
If you want, Daniel did the math while we were talking, if you wanna write down the annual cost, I'd be willing to. At least, I, if we don't have. Top left, the 750 deductible, 370,148, I'm just gonna round off the 700. To the right, 340,926. Bottom left, 329,243. Bottom right, 300,948. Back page, HSA, 288,056. If people are looking at this, we better explain this back page, because it's obviously the least expensive. The reason is, you see, it's the 4,000 deductible, the reason is, there's, there's no copays, until you get to 4,000. It's a health savings account, like. Okay? So you see, it's after 80, 20, after 4,000, then, you may 88, 90% until you. Okay, so you see, it's after eighty-twenty, after four thousand, then you may eighty-eight, ninety-eight percent, until you get to six thousand maximum. And those, those copays start kicking in after the four thousand. So that's, that explains why it's that expensive. Now, if you could put tax belt dollars in the health savings account, that's a whole nother thing we can discuss. Uh, we wanna, we made a motion on a couple of things. I'll shut up now.
Thank you, guys.
All of them, Dan, all of them?
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank y'all, everyone, take care.
All right, consider approval of building permits. Have you got a few?
I may not have these in exactly the order that they slid around. A piece of wall from the fuel fence yard is gonna replace the channeling fence. Crystal Dick, four oh one north fifth, wants to build a screen in port.
No, no.
No.
You're out. Is that a, you're screening in position for?
There's a pally up there already.
I had two come in today. Uh, Old Heath Cop, wants to build a forty-one to forty-five foot addition, wanting to get a shop. At, uh, five hundred inches. And Wesley and Dorothy, also, uh, they're gonna be at two thousand seven Broadway, they've built a new hall.
Two thousand what?
Just at two thousand seven Broadway.
Where's this at?
It's, uh, if it's back, back this side of the school, there's a little bit, if there's a five acre plot there, they bought.
Next to where that house was five acre, it's two thousand.
Is that the, the one right before?
No, there was a house there.
Bobby Moore? Yeah, Bobby Moore's place and.
It's over there.
There's a red ring on this.
It's over there now.
Mrs. Bailey.
It's over there, it's still, it's over there. On Dr. Hodges?
Yeah.
He's running a shop.
No.
Motion to approve it.
Second. I'll say it's out.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we can probably jump in here. We are. Here in the city administration, five weeks before, please. Okay. Uh, our disco, uh, yeah, disco, uh, we, we have nine, we purchased nine disco baskets, they've been installed at the park. Uh, have you had a chance to see them?
Well, I played, I played sports.
Okay, and how is it?
I like it.
Good.
Must not be very good, you should have had a hundred.
It's short.
It is short, it is. Hopefully, in the future, we can expand on this, but this is, you know.
This is a good starting.
A humble beginning, so. Uh, as y'all know, uh, we have, FundView is our new, uh, accounting operating system. The module for FundView for the payroll has been installed, and Debbie's going to do, I guess, this kind of payroll. Uh, it'll all be FundView with the time clock plus, is that right? So we're a little excited, this'll be our full, we're migrating away from U S T I, so, uh, we're excited about this little milestone for us in payroll. Eighth Street, uh, I know this has been a while, but, uh, patching for Eighth Street is complete. You know, where we went in and, uh, fixed the water lines, we had those lines going across, it was, you know, it took a while to, uh, for the rain to stop and for us to get that patched, but we finally done. Uh, we started the demolition for Dog Park, actually, last week, uh, if y'all rode by there, y'all might see the butt cut, and we had taken out, and, um, we're excited about the Dog Park being installed.
Okay, um, on the Dog Park, are they installing a double gate, cause Dog Park needs a double gate, and I don't know if that was ever discussed or, it wasn't on their original plans, and I brought it up and.
Okay.
So it's pretty much a must on the Dog Park, or, or the Dog Park?
Double gate.
Two gates so the dog doesn't run off.
So, like, one person goes down, the dog doesn't shoot out. It's an extra cat.
Like two doors, you can go into a puppy.
I, I do not know, I'd have to find out. And, um, but.
We can check. Cause it's very important, you don't want the dog to lose, so. It's on the Dog Park.
Yeah, the Dog Park, you're supposed to, you go to the Dog Park, they're not sitting against.
Uh, I've got a typo on this next one. Uh, tomorrow, August, it's at ten thirty A M, uh, it's a town hall meeting, and, and it's not gonna be with Mike Conway, it's gonna be with Senator Perry. I, I was actually reading an article on Mike Conway retiring, and it kind of caught up into that, so.
Someone else.
And it's ten thirty at Main Street, sort of thing. And what he's gonna do is just go over some of the, uh, state of Texas legislation that they've gone through this year, updates and some changes. Uh, and hopefully, a lot of our council can show up to support this town hall meeting. Uh, T M L is requesting, uh, okay, our stand pipe, uh, our T M L insurance is requesting more engineering, it may take another week or two for them to get that organized. Uh, what they're gonna do is come and check the wells a little closer, check the, uh, uh, anchor bolts and the concrete. Uh, they've already looked at the wells and unlooked at the problem, they kinda wanna, you know, a little deeper, sandblasted and X rated. So, cause they're not wanting to pay for a new stand pipe, they're just wanting to repair it. Uh, but that's where we at right there on this stuff, and that's all I know.
All right, here are the questions, P three ten, I have some city contacts, if you guys have anything on the agenda.
I think we need to discuss the ordinance issue with the playhouse, what was that?
On the agenda next week, or next?
Yeah, I think maybe that we should, unless we get it addressed before then, if you wanna run out there and take care of it, but. If they need to come back and, we might need to make sure that our ordinance officers are here.
Right.
To discuss on this, maybe even discuss the process.
Right.
Of. It's a struggle, not long. Yeah.
I agree.
I'll, I'll. Yeah, we have to go one more.
Anything else?
The law, y'all were gonna go this, did you?
Not yet.
We did not.
Envisioned us, but, but I'm still game. You wanna follow me one day, we'll run down there, schedule the line, find the person home, name and the address.
Okay.
All right, city may consider discussing authorized action on the city's financial and discuss budget workshop.
Okay, uh, you have a copy of your, your financials here?
This one.
So where is this whole thing? FundView. Turn like so.
I'm not sure, I got a front page. But go ahead, ease question.
Okay, basically, uh, if you look at the, uh, finances here on this, uh, you go to the general fund, uh, at the bottom, this is for, uh, income coming in, uh, the budget for, was set at three million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, as of July the thirty-first, we were at two million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, we're at seventy-nine point four percent of that figure, so if you divide it out to where we're at now versus where we're gonna, we should be, okay, I think we're gonna fall short of that, three million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand. Uh, I anticipate us to be at three million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Or is it coming in under budget projected?
This is actually gonna be under income.
Under income.
I, I'm, it's, sorry. All right. Uh, you can go to the, uh, general fund under police department. Okay. Um, I've got a second page here, but if you look at it, uh, under police department totals, you have, uh, annual budget, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. Uh, year-to-date, as of thirty-one July, uh, we're at six hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, we're at eighty-three point nine three percent, which is just about right, we got basically, uh, two months to go.
To Tommy.
Yes, sir.
There's a, I'm very confused on, annual budget for the police chief is six thousand.
Yes.
Year-to-date actual, a hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred fifty-six.
Right.
Fifty-three thousand dollars last month.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I apologize, I was gonna look into that before I got here.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm still waiting on my check.
Yeah.
They'll owe you a dollar.
So that's an error there.
Well, we're gonna have to look into that.
Both cities gotta be.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yes, yeah, well.
Cause the corporal in error, or is it correct?
Well, the corporals.
Ten thousand dollars a month.
Well, no.
How many corporals we got?
Right, the corporals is actually year-to-date thirty-nine thousand, uh, annual budget thirty-eight.
Yeah, I understand, but what it's got us this month, ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. That's pretty much.
That's not a month, that's a variance. Well, current.
Current month, actual.
Current month, actually.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were reading on this column.
Where'd that, that come from?
Possibly a typo, I mean.
Is that, he resigned, right?
Uh, yes, uh, now, this is a new program.
Debbie is looking at a year-to-date actual and the budget amount on our office.
Right, that's so long, concern about year-to-date actual. Right, right.
It just needs a script.
Right, right, and, and this is something we look, or, uh, I saw it the other day when we looked at this, and, uh, I just haven't had time to go look at and see why Stan is making a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
He must know why.
He must've known where it's at.
But this is a glitch, huh?
This is gonna have to be a glitch.
Yeah, sure.
You know, see, and what we did when we moved, uh, information over from U S T I into FundView, they, they migrated all this information. Now, there's a chance that some of that could've got put in incorrectly. Uh, you know, and it could be a, you know, just a typo on.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, uh.
Right.
Something happened in between.
It's a download and upload.
What I'm saying is, just, she just made, took it and figured what happened, fix it.
Right, was it hand keyed or downloaded and uploaded?
Downloaded and uploaded.
There you go, okay.
Sam key wrong somewhere.
Well, and, and, and the conversion somewhere, it may have had a problem, you know? Uh, when you, if you have a formula in there, you know, and it pops it over, so.
Running one day based from one program, you could've, you may not find all the problems.
Exactly.
We asked, he thinks this one's gonna be this one, and then there's a little program, and then it all says, make this one go here, make this one go here, and then I just dropped one wrong.
Right.
We did what that day, like with.
Right, right. Okay, so, overall, uh, percentage of budget used, eighty-three point nine three percent, so, and it was still two months ago, uh, you know, no major expenditures in the out, or, you know, all the ways, so, we looked pretty good. Uh, municipal court, uh, for Judge Little, again, uh, now, if you look in the, in the line item, second line item, technology court security, uh, they have a year-to-date actual of one thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars, the annual budget was for four hundred dollars on that line item. So, uh, it's only over budget four hundred and forty-three percent, which, uh, I'm, I'm thinking a lot, some of this is when we bought the module for the municipal court, so, this is gonna be under the technology line item, which, it wasn't originally budgeted for, but we can do a budget amendment to, to correct that line item. But overall, still, uh, let's see, you had, I'm not sure what sundry items are gonna be included in there, that went over from four hundred dollars to four hundred ninety-one dollars, uh, which threw it over a hundred and twenty-two percent. Uh, overall, uh, total, we're at eighty-three point five percent of the budget, which is about right where we're at. Uh, under city hall, uh, you got ground maintenance, uh, there's a line item there for ground maintenance, it's a low high, that line item's two hundred percent over, uh, the, the budget was five hundred, we spent a thousand seventy.
The one thing that I would think, if we know we had a major clerical error at the chief's salary, you might even scrutinize all the tape. I mean, it's possible that there's multiple, is it possible, I guess it could be possible, in multiple states.
Yes.
Right now, because of the data conversion.
Right, so take that in mind when you're looking at the numbers. It is, because, you know, and it's.
Not, not simple, like, just in this?
Right, well, well, some of it is how, how we choose to input it as well, you know? Some of the ground maintenance, it may have had a five hundred dollar budget, but, uh, you know, we, we just clearing, you know, we, we had the trees trimmed up front, uh, you know, which, that's, if I know, like, for instance, you know, we spent the money, that's where we put it, you know? I can, so.
Right.
So, uh, let's see, police and fire station, uh, we had a budget of three thousand, and went three hundred fifty-six dollars over that budget line item. Uh, let's see, Kinder Plaza, we went, uh, five percent, well, yeah, five point nine percent over that, that budgeted line item. Uh, otherwise, everything else was pretty good. Total for the city hall on this, this whole is, uh, we're forty-five point one percent in budget, so, which means we had to use fifty-five percent of this budget. Uh, general fund, non-departmental. Uh, salaries, we are a little heavy on, on, on payroll at the moment, uh, and we went over, over our line item budget there, uh, for payroll, or salaries.
Is that line included overtime, or is it just straight salary right there?
It's gonna be just straight salary. Uh, now, I'll show you later in streets, uh, the street department, we're, we're over budget, uh, and that's gonna have salaries and overtime, so.
Uh, Tommy, what was your salary for the last two week period?
Around fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand? So if I hear more, that's not true?
No. No, I mean, fifty-seven maybe, but, you know, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be seventy-seven thousand, or seventy-five thousand, or anything like that. No, no, I mean, fifty-seven maybe, but, you know, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be seventy-seven thousand or seventy-five thousand or anything like that.
Okay.
Yes, that works.
Okay, right. Okay, so, uh,
to Tommy.
Yes.
You're the fifth city administrator, manager of service, and people reveal what they wanna hear and believe what they have to say.
Yes, sir.
But what's the status of our city financial?
Well, cause I hear we're overgrown, that's be overgrown. As you look to.
Can't compare it.
Right, as you look through the budget, okay, you'll see where we're within budget other than the street department. We have gone over, and basically what's happened, you had, you have two departments working out the street department at the moment. You have the street department and the property management, and we're heavy in employees in both. The reason we're heavy, okay, uh, after Carlos passed away in the water department, uh, we had four or five people in that department. All those people ended up leaving, aside from one, which is David Brink, okay. We had to replace those people in order to get work done. Uh, some of them worked out well, and two or three of them didn't. But instead of letting those people go, we moved them to a different department. We didn't necessarily, I mean, they didn't necessarily need to be in water, but we did need help. We just had a bunch of rain, you know, uh, we were behind almost everywhere, we had drafts running everywhere. Uh, so we just moved those people to property maintenance. Uh.
So you realize less than four days with life board.
Well, and, and that's another thing, we, we, we opened the pool, we had, I believe, fifteen people there, and we picked up another five or four seasonal people. Uh, we have some people helping with the recycle center. We had, uh, uh, an individual helping down at the park, helping clog, because honestly, we were mowing every other week, and it felt very. So, uh, you know, on the combination of, uh, a lot of heavy rainfall, where we were trying to catch up, uh, and that also includes in some of our street departments, we would, uh, we would patch roads. It would rain, we'd patch those roads again, it would rain, I mean, went through this process through and over time.
My street isn't bad, that hump over there by the baseball field, we patched there, almost there during the rains.
Right, right.
There.
Well, that, that whole.
Big waterfall through there.
That, that whole, the old riverbed, you know, from there to Fourteenth Street, needs attention every time it rains. I mean, any, of any kind of flow at all. So, I mean, it, it's a combination of, of, of a lot of that. Uh, now, are we within budget? Yes, except for the street department, okay.
But we're under budget in other departments.
Right, now, when you go in and you produce some, uh, uh, adjustments, a, a, a budget adjustment, right, you know, and, uh, you can account for some of this. Now, we are also at the end of the year, right?
We have contingent on sales tax revenue and other, other things too, Tommy, but the bottom line, are we okay financially or are we paying our bills?
We, we are paying our bills.
We're not growing at the bank.
No, we, we have cash, we don't have a lot of cash, we don't have the cash we want, but, but we are gonna make our payroll.
And other things like this, uh, computers, Jason, no more better than that.
The modules.
The modules we go, we're able to pay those things.
We did pay the module, we did pay Fun View for the modules.
Fun View.
Right, now, there is installing others, and as we go, we will pay them, right? So, I mean, it, it's kind of a process.
So how many outstanding bills do you think we have?
I don't know about bills, but we have about fifteen years outstanding.
Now, let me address one little thorn in my side. For two or three months, we've been paying seventy-five hundred dollars for leased equipment at the water.
Yes, true. I, I don't know what price per se, but yes. After, when Carlos died, okay, uh, we'd gone in, we fixed the valve, we'd installed the valve, and, uh, we had it repaired to pipe that was damaged, okay. Carlos passed away, I mean, within a week after.
So the leased equipment is not being used or needed, it's still sitting out there?
It is needed, okay, uh, we weren't able to go in immediately and, and take all that out, okay. We had a immense amount of rain, okay? So it, it, it's really rained that whole area, you know. Now, we haven't really had a lot of expertise to go in. Okay, what they did, they put two planks on that pipe, okay, which will be a fix, but it's not a proper fix. We need to, to put flanges on that thing. We had nobody, no individual, that, that could do that right after Carlos passed away. Then, I mean, you know, within two weeks, we.
But we're sitting on seventy-five hundred dollars of leased equipment, so when do you think that'll show up there?
Well, uh, we had a list of nine.
A month.
We had a list of nine, uh, Lucens that, in the water department, we had to correct. Uh, for instance, the fire hydrant down in South County, okay, uh, this is a big one for us. Uh, we, we, we had a new individual named Robert Ruses, okay, he came on to work with us. He has eight years' experience in the water department.
He's been here before.
Right, yeah, he has been here last year, and he's coming back. He actually went to work with one of our suppliers, and, uh, but he has the skill and the knowledge to come in and help us get some of these, knock some of these harder projects out. Uh, for instance, the, the fire plug down there, we got a brand-new fire plug, I think we knocked it out last week. Uh, we're making plans this week, uh, in fact, we moved a, uh, some equipment out there to address the, the pit or the valve today, because we wanna get everything done this week.
So then when do you think we won't be paying the seventy-five hundred?
Well, as soon as we get that.
A month, you think, maybe?
What's that? Oh, no, 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 Tommy.
If you, if you're gonna have to replace it, put flanges on there, that's news to us, we, we have to get informed then. So that's additional work that has to be done before we can put a box in there to.
Well, the problem is the box is in there.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about new, you can't say man box anymore.
Right.
Personnel box, go down in there, repair it if we have further problems later on.
Right.
So, so you're gonna have to replace the flanges and then bring the new box in and set it.
Right.
So somebody can go down in there later on and work on the valve if something else happens.
If we choose to do that, I, I mean, it, it's been so long now, that we need to go in.
When you say, if you fix the flanges, you're just gonna backfill it and not put a box in there?
It's possible, I mean, uh, you know, what we're trying to do is get this finished, okay? And, and, and we did wanna put a man box in, right? Uh, our supplier still doesn't have the boxes to us. Now, if it's gonna be another three weeks, four weeks, then, then we may not even use that, and we'll put it in like we did before, right?
Well, anyway, you're aware of the seventy-five and a month, and you're bothered by.
Yes.
And that's all, that's all I need to know.
Yes, yeah.
And I appreciate you, in case other council members of the public don't know, you took out the speed mobiles on that new vehicle.
Yes, yes, we did.
That's really nice.
Yes, thank you.
And you removed an abandoned RV from.
Yes.
Over by one.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, we're doing a lot of things.
No, of course, there's, there's a bunch of people appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I knew they did, yeah, that was, that's been a request.
And also the fire hydrant down here, I'm sure fire department appreciates that.
Yeah.
I assume it's in place?
It is in place and ready to go.
Okay.
Uh, come to find out, that, that, that fire hydrant did not work. It was, uh, this is all we ended up having to use a new one, uh, instead of putting the old one back.
Yeah, you can continue, I'm sure either.
Okay. Anyway, so, uh, but yeah, we, we've had some, some, uh, obstacles and hurdles, but, you know, we've, uh, gotten around them, and, or, at least in the process of trying to get around them. We, we had, you know, like I say, especially in the water department, we had, we had a list of, that we're trying to follow up, you know, some things we're trying to knock out, uh, you know, that we started, that we need to go ahead and, you know, tie it up. And some of it was just, you know, uh, the crew I had was very fresh, and, uh, we, uh, they just needed a little more decades. Now, we've got that with Robert.
Yeah, Robert's really nice.
Tommy, this, this crew had a huge asset in, in, in a lot of ways, so, uh, we're able to push forward with a lot of these things. Uh, uh, let's see, what else? Uh, we can jump over to street if y'all want to. If that's where the. Uh, well, just past the swimming pool here, uh, we're at ninety-one percent on the swimming pool. Uh, and actually, next week, we start dropping off, uh, lifeguards. Uh, a lot of the lifeguards are going to school or two days or, you know, there's sports, so we'll start dropping off lifeguards. I believe it was the ninth, then the last day of the pool open during the week, and then it's open only on the weekends, so. Uh, but that also helps with the, the overall budget, you know.
To Tommy, under streets, correctional?
Yes, sir.
Annual budget, three seventy-five, year-to-date actual, four fifty-nine?
Yes, sir, we are over budget.
What happened to the refunds we're supposed to be getting back from the public?
Well, uh.
Should've, should've, definitely on there, should've.
Well, yes, uh, and, and we have been getting, we got the initial refunds that we asked for. Uh, what we're finding, we have to go back and audit them every, you know, three or four months to audit those invoices and go back. So, that's, uh, I'm gonna check this job, just to go back in, audit those invoices and see if there's any problems.
The working on it?
Yeah, 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 we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, actually. Uh, on the, off what you're talking about, something else to.
Great, Tommy, I mean, I ask the question, you guys, say you guys more on salary than normal?
Yes.
And you're paying overtime?
Yes.
So, the question I guess would be, if more people, why we still have to go overtime?
Well, we were that far behind, I mean, we were, we were having people coming in on Saturdays, we were having people, uh, you know, we were trying to, uh.
What are they doing?
Well, you know, everything from, uh, mowing to hauling trash, you know.
We had guys working really late sharing that water leak, they're working, you know, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but, uh, tree limbs, you know, uh, our tree limb truck will work on Saturday and Sunday sometime. I mean, if you bug at this page here. Yeah, okay, uh, the street department, just on some of the work orders, uh, you know, from June to July, we had a ninety-three percent increase. Uh, water department was, uh, fifty-seven percent increase, property maintenance limb truck, we had two hundred eighty-eight limb pickups just for July. Uh, I mean, they were, that, that truck was moving every day, all day.
Speaking of that, can you make, uh, make a Facebook announcement that they need to call? I think people sometimes got that, I see it all the time, just frankly, that I've been there for a while.
Right.
There are things going on around it, I think they just don't know they need to call, maybe.
Well, some of them do, and some of them don't, and, and, you know, if we have a work order, we'll, those we tend to do first, and then we'll go back and pick up anything else we see. Uh, and we've, uh, been working with, between, uh, the driver and Melissa, who does a lot of the work orders to, uh, you know, organize it by, by section in town, right? Uh, you know, we got picking up about high school and going over to, you know, Strong, and then go back up about high school, because just those work orders fell that way, right? So, I mean, we're working it by section, but, uh, uh, yeah, alley cleanup, mowing, and that's a lot of the property maintenance, so. Anyway, it's been a busy couple of months, uh, and a lot of it is, you know, we were stalled out by rain for so long that when we did, when it did let up, uh, we had to really get moving forward.
Well, definitely had a little situation called tornado.
Yeah, that, that, that didn't help things, you know.
Because it took a long city.
It hit.
So, you know, if you get straight back here.
Right. So, I mean, you know, we, we had our obstacles, we had a lot of rain, we had, had a tornado, uh, what else was there? We had a death, that was a huge hit for the water department. You know, we had a few big pipe leaks, you know, it's, it's, it all kinda adds up after a while, but, uh, anyway. Uh, y'all have any other questions on financing?
What are these packets that we just gave us just now?
That's actually, uh, budget.
Budget.
Okay.
That's budget.
Okay.
That's, that's the next year, uh, so we kind of go through those, see what we wanna do for next year.
What is the cash on hand at the balance sheet? In the general fund?
Yes.
Minus four fifty-nine, here is zero six twenty-four.
That's just for you.
I forget that. The water and air for your support in general fund.
The other sheets are budget. Uh, I'm not sure how y'all want it, and we want to start writing the budget for. You know, the budget figures there.
The new?
Yes.
Just what you're talking about?
Yes, yeah, there's, I think, three different.
So you're gonna finish the page.
I don't know if y'all wanna go through those now, or y'all wanna take a moment, look at it on, and maybe then Wednesday, I mean.
I'd rather study a little bit. So what was the answer to that question?
Yeah, he was asking about this picture here.
Okay.
I'll ask my dad, you know, cash, usually you have a cash balance.
Is that what I wanted the answer to? And you said that's negative, though? And you said there's negative, though?
Yes, sir.
So the cash balance is what?
Well, are you talking how much cash we got in the bank right now?
It's gotta be as good as any, I guess.
Okay.
Well-
Uh, I would say twenty-fifteen to twenty thousand. I mean, that's, that's how much cash we got right now. Now, moving on to this, well, okay, we have, we have, we have sales tax, okay? That check will come in on the tenth, okay? And it ranges between fifty and a hundred and fifty thousand, depending on quarter, okay? Uh, we can get cash from property tax. Now those property taxes are already, should already be in, uh, uh, the only thing that's gonna come in after that is some stragglers on property tax. Now, our, 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 our main income stream are, is gonna be water sales and we'll get about a hundred thousand dollars a month on that, so.
When does that pay?
You what?
The hundred thousand dollars a month that we get on water? When is that? When, it's just throughout the month as people pay their bills?
Right, well, it is and, and typically everybody pays by the twentieth, you know, and you don't have over, yeah, but, uh, I believe the tenth is the cutoff date. So, again, the tenth, you have more money. So.
Do you all have any other reserves?
Well, we got those, we got those two, those two CDs that are in covered.
Two hundred and ten thousand CDs.
Yeah, that are in covered by loans.
That can be spent if it's not a non-pro.
Right.
Which is, which is, yes.
Yes.
There's two.
Yes. So.
So Tommy, where were we this time?
Uh, honestly, I don't know. I can find out.
Either way, we're-
Just wanna have a look at the last five years, where are we this, this year?
Right.
The last five years.
What I've been?
You did, I thought that was checks. Oh, it's, okay.
And we can get that number for you.
I just wondered if this is a situation, you live up to your tenure?
Well-
You live prior to, and what's the trend?
Just a trend in finances is, I'd like to know, you know, the level of flow, is that pretty much?
Right. A little rough on that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Uh, I mean, I've had a month, I, I don't know what it was last year per se, but we can find it, uh, you know, proceed after the last five years and we can get that to everybody and say if you start preparing.
Yeah, I mean, might not have, I think, but coming back on our time, if we catch a little bit of rest in fiscal year.
Yep, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, we got two months, you know? Uh, we're basically gonna limp through the next two months and, uh, you know, work on the next year's budget and see what we can do about, uh, you know, what we're gonna do
Yeah, because we're gonna have to get to work for that pretty quick.
Yes.
Get that solved, that's the job.
Right.
You have to have the budget file by the end of this month.
Right.
Instead of talking.
By the end of this month, okay?
Yes, about the twenty-ninth, I believe.
The organization we need this month is what else?
Right, well, and that was, that was kinda where I was going. We can meet on, we can meet on Wednesdays, you know, you know, give you, you know, when y'all wanna meet again and talk about budget.
Budget holders, you win it, didn't you? You make a link to the one thing I said for seventy-two thousand?
Yes. What's, uh, that like the calendar?
I can get it, stay.
No, you gotta have it done by the twenty-ninth.
Right.
Really?
We need Friday, Thursday?
Thursday, Friday.
No, that's right. We have to go ahead and Thursday.
No, it is.
No problem.
Thursday, Friday is good for me.
Then it is.
Let's do Thursday.
At what time?
About thirty.
Thirteen.
Everybody agree?
On the fire cooking.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday.
On fire cooking that day, Thursday?
This Thursday, Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Can't do it on Thursday.
Okay, so it's gotta be Friday.
Something like that.
Because we're gonna, we'll post that into tomorrow. So Friday.
Friday's coming up.
We had it probably today.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So our homework's to look over this and solve it all by Friday. I got two or three to leave.
See, if you have any questions, some of it's gonna need to be adjusted, but we're also gonna need to get some, some information, uh, the insurance, you know, all things like that.
I mean, do not, I'm sure everyone wants to start the tax rate, but the, or the buzz graphic, because that plays into what money we'll have, right?
It does.
The same day.
Same day, that's what you need to help with.
But, which now brings up another question. Okay, let's, okay.
Pretty good in there?
Well, this is something I got from Robin.
Okay.
Uh, last year's tax rate was point five three two four two eight. Okay. There's a, I, I think by state law this year, we can go up to eight percent.
Yeah, that's the middle of the spectrum.
Right, so right now, the law is that you could raise that rate up to eight percent. If you go over eight percent, you would get a, the, the public would get petition, yeah, they could petition to roll, to roll back that rate. Okay, so your top end eight percent would be, without going over the rollback rate, would be point five nine three four two eight.
And how much are you sure you're gonna give them that credit?
One hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. Okay, now, if we say the same, well, and we're talking valuation, right?
Right.
Everybody knows our valuation went up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe next week, but I think countywide it went up.
Six hundred and thirty thousand if I remember correctly.
Uh.
You've been doing that, that for sure. So it's not six point three million or something?
Right, right. Seventy-three million.
Seventy-three million.
And the city, and the city valuation went up sixteen million dollars. So, uh, and if we went to the, that's, that's what, that's what gives us a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars additional income is based on that sixteen million dollar valuation increase.
This is if we stay with the same rate?
Yeah, well, no, no, that was with the rollback. Okay, now, uh, we had, I guess, last year's tax lady was gonna be, or is or was eight hundred nine one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars. That was total, right, at the point five three two four two eight percent. Uh, if we were gonna do the same as last year, our rate would need to go down point four nine two zero three eight percent.
To keep it at the same dollar?
At the same dollar now, right? So.
Can we all send this for the Friday meeting?
Yes.
Hundred and fifty?
Right.
Maybe before or something?
Right, right. I need to see it. And, uh, but we're gonna need to figure out at what rate, how much y'all need to go. A lot is gonna be down on the budget, what we wanna do in the future, uh, and what you think, you know?
Well, we'll go be.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't, we have to care for the rates, we don't take back the money that people protested went and potentially saved by having the valuation lowered, because the whole point of protesting was.
Well, yes.
So be careful.
Right.
Get ground right now.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, how much you need, how much, how much you want, you know, that's what it all boils down to, you know?
What's it want, what's it need is sacred, all of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I'll get this guy. Uh, that's all I have. Did y'all have anything else?
Any more questions, someone?
All right, we're on downtown City Council Committee Executive Sessions, authorized by Texas government code section five five one, that's the rule seven.